Willie, Mr. Walter. Mr. Rappaport is in the house. Call to order, meeting of the city council. I'd like to recognize Mr. Clarence Reese will give us the invocation. Clarence, come forward, and General Graves will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Father God, we come to you right now with humble hearts and open minds. Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this meeting that has been called. Father God, we ask that you would look over and watch over our federal, state, and city government. Father God, we pray for the leaders of this city and the council. Father God, we ask a special blessing upon Councilman Jerry Bowman. Father God, we also ask that you would bless the police and fire chiefs who are over our public safety. Father God, we ask that you would look after the citizens and the city employees who may be facing crisis due to economic troubles. Father God, we just want to give you all our honor and all our glory for everything that you would do today. We ask that you would, that people would place political agendas aside and the best decisions are made for the citizens of the city of Shreveport. In the name of Jesus, we pray and ask all these things be done. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Captain Gray.
President.
Captain Evans.
Here.
Captain Jenkins. Councilman Corbin.
Present.
Councilman Corbin.
Present.
Councilman O'Malley. And Councilman Wood.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Certainly, Mr. Second.
So moved by Councilman Jenkins and seconded by Councilman Evers. Is there any discussion?
I believe that was Corbin.
Corbin, okay.
Just for the record.
Correction, Madam Clerk.
Just for the record.
All right. Please vote. And the motion appears. Does any council member at this time have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests?
I see you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Corbin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I meant to do this a couple of meetings ago, and I completely forgot about it, but I want to recognize Spark and the numerous community groups who came together and worked to get the front part of Seadick and Dixon Park back open to the public again. It's a challenging property that we have due to it's often flooded, and everybody came together and did a good cleanup job, and so now you can access the fishing pier, you can put a small boat in, and it's good to see the public back having access to that property, and I thank everyone involved for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, Mayor Tyler.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. I have several announcements today. The first one, I'd like to take this time to remember one of our police officers who will be laid to rest this week, Captain Rita James. She fell ill while working security at the state fair. A public viewing will be held from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. tomorrow, Wednesday, at Municipal Auditorium. Her body will lie in state from 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. Thursday. The funeral services will be held at 11:00 a.m. Thursday at Municipal Auditorium. Let's keep her family in our thoughts and in our prayers. Also on Wednesday, we will celebrate the life of retired Shreveport Police Department Officer Mike Smith with visitation at 11:00 a.m., followed by a noon memorial service at Summer Grove Baptist Church. We will also keep that family in our thoughts and prayers. Our next announcement, Shreveport and the National Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund announced today our selection to replicate the proven financial empowerment center model under the new FEC public national platform. Shreveport will receive technical assistance and a seed grant to bring free, high-quality, one-on-one financial counseling to Shreveport's residents. The CFE Fund's FEC public program is supported by a $7.75 million investment from Bloomberg philanthropies, excuse me, as part of their American Cities Initiative. I want to thank Mrs. Bunny Moore and our Community Development Department for working diligently to help us bring some of those dollars to Shreveport to help our citizens. Our next announcement, I'm pleased to announce the groundbreaking ceremony will be held tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. at 1200 Mylum Street for the future Mylum Street kitchen incubator. We're proud to be a partner in the development of this initiative with Southern University at Shreveport and our Department of Community Development. The Northwest Louisiana Council of Governments and the city of Shreveport were recipients of a $1 million grant, Choice Neighborhood Planning Grant. After nearly two years of public outreach and engagement, we successfully completed a transformation plan targeting Allen Dale, Leitfield Heights, and the west edge of downtown. The grant was specifically for fiscal neighborhood-based activities identified in the transformation plan designed to spur redevelopment. Our next announcement, I want to thank everyone who came out to the mayor's prayer breakfast last week. We had a great time with our speaker, Mrs. Jenny Henson. I also want to thank all our veterans. We had the opportunity to sign a joint proclamation and participate in an event to celebrate the service of our veterans in this region. Next announcement, I want to thank everyone who came out for the grand opening of our new intermodal facility, including Governor John Bill Edwards, Transportation Secretary Sean Wilson, and FTA's Administrator Gail Litzey. I want to congratulate Mr. De Niro Washington, Mr. Allen Bright, and their team on a job well done. Sunday was the beginning of new routes and the use of our new electric buses. Also last week, Mr. Washington and Mr. Bright got to show off our new electric buses, and we also had some new CNG buses at the Louisiana Public Transit Association Conference, which was held right here in Shreveport. Mr. Washington is the president of that organization. Thanks for getting them, Mr. Washington, to come to our city and spend some of their money with us. The Shreveport Police Department recently received funding of more than $100,000 through a grant program offered through the Louisiana Highway Safety Commission that will give the department more funds to conduct operations to help keep roadways safer. And I know we've had lots of discussions about the various speeders in our city, and this grant actually will address that. The grant allows SPD to apply a variety of additional traffic safety enforcement initiatives that include DWI enforcement, speed, and seat belt enforcement. We got that word just a few days ago. We're excited to be able to get that grant so we can address some of the DWI problems and some of the speeding in our city. This week also, we will have our 2017 Paint Your Heart Out kickoff celebration at 5:30 p.m. Thursday on the floor, on the first floor, at the Community Development Office, 401 Texas Street. I want to invite everyone to come out to that event. I'd like to also invite you to mark your calendar for the lighting of our Christmas tree and other lighting along the riverfront. It will take place at 6:00 p.m. Tuesday, November 21st. Please bring your family and friends out to enjoy a nice event. Also, the annual Rockies Over the Red will be held on Saturday, November 25th. I want to also announce that Huntington High School student Janee Williams will share her voice with concert goers at the famed Carnegie Hall on February 4th. She was selected for the 2018 High School Honors Performance Series for Vocal and Instrumental Musicians at Carnegie Hall. We're so very proud of our young talent here in Shreveport. And last, Mr. Chairman and city council members, we had a long list of announcements today. The Louisiana Contractors Accreditation Program offered critical information about construction management and how to prepare for the business and law portion of the contractors licensing exam at Northwest Louisiana Technical College. This program puts companies in a better position to bid on larger contracts. A total of 16 small business owners participated in the program. The city of Shreveport offered scholarships to 13, and three paid their own way because of the value they saw in the program. We want to thank all of our sponsors, Stewart Consulting, Inc., Carthon Graft Smoke Engineering, Inc., and Northwest Louisiana Technical College. Today we have with us, and I'm going to ask you to please stand because they're the reason we were able to get the scholarships. If we have Mr. Brad Graft and Mr. Randall Smoke with Carthon Graft Smoke Engineering, will you please stand? Thank you so much for helping our small business owners here in Shreveport. Thank you so much. We also want to thank Mrs. Diane Clark and Mr. Gerald Joshua with Northwest Louisiana Technical College for their willingness to host a six-week class. And they're here today, thank you so much for helping our small business owners. To speak further about the experience with these classes is one of our Fair Share clients, I thank Mr. Dennis Mayshack with Mayshack Services LLC is here. Is he here today? Please come forward, Mr. Mayshack. Thank you so much for participating.
First of all, in all presence to God, to our mayor, great mayor, Ms. Tyler, to the city council, Ms. Karen Barnes, and everyone else that's assembled. My name is Dennis Mayshack, the owner and operator of Mayshack Services. I attended the six-week contractor course to design to help the disadvantaged business owners in the long business portion of the Louisiana exam. Throughout the six weeks' course, we was taught about bonds, money management skills, state policies, and procedures. This class was very informative and helpful. Without the Fair Share program, none of this would be possible. Fair Share program keep the companies like myself and various other companies informed about different projects and things that's going on in the city. Again, I want to thank Ms. Olive Tyler for this program and Ms. Karen Barnes. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayshack. We appreciate it. Okay, and it's my understanding, I know that there is an agenda item, but Pastor Gant is here for Mr. Janee Williams. Pastor Gant, will you, Pastor Gant, will you please stand? Thank you so much for being here. And Mrs. Gant, where are you? Mrs. Gant, is Mrs. Gant back there also with you, Pastor? Thank you, Mrs. Gant. Okay. And I know that there is something on the program for them a little bit later, but I did want to recognize them and thank them for allowing their daughter, I believe, to go and perform at Carnegie Hall. And those are the announcements for today, Mr. Chairman and council members. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Councilman Rappaport.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we will suspend the rules and take up Resolution 186.
Second. Second by Councilman Jenkins. Any discussion? Motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I would like for the clerk to read Resolution 186.
Do you want him to come forward first?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, we ask the young lady.
Reverend Joe Gant, Reverend and Mrs. Joe Gant, Janee Williams, Mrs. Brass, if she's here, Mr. Graham, if he's here from Huntington High School.
Pastor Gant, y'all come right on forward.
Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution to recognize and congratulate Janee Williams for being selected to participate in the 2018 High School Honors Program Performance Series at Carnegie Hall, and to otherwise provide with respect there, too, is by Councilwoman Stephanie Lynch, Mr. Chairman, who could not be here today because she broke her ankle, and I think she's going to have to have surgery. Whereas Janee Williams, a junior at Huntington High School with a 3.8 cumulative grade point average, has been accepted into the Carnegie Hall High School Honors Concert Choir for the 2018 High School Honors Performance Series at Carnegie Hall. And whereas Janee Williams was chosen from a field of applicants from all 50 states, Washington, D.C., six provinces in Canada, Australia, China, Hong Kong, Mexico, New Zealand, Qatar, South Korea, and the United Kingdom. And whereas during her stay in New York from February the 1st through the 5th, 2018, Janee Williams will perform with the Honors Concert Choir at Carnegie Hall. She will work with the master conductors, rehearse and interact with other participants from across the world, build a performance resume, cruise on a private yacht, see a Broadway show, and experience the sights and sounds of the Big Apple. And whereas Janee Williams is enrolled in the Business Law Magnet Program at Huntington High School and participates in a number of extracurricular activities. And whereas Janee Williams is the daughter of Reverend and Mrs. Jo R. Gant, a choral director at Huntington is Mrs. Arneise Brass, and her principal is Mr. Talents Graham. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Shreveport in due regular and legal session convened, that the city council congratulates Janee Williams for being accepted as a member of the Carnegie Hall High School Honors Concert Choir for the 28 High School Honors Performance Series at Carnegie Hall, February the 1st through February the 5th, 2018. Be it further resolved that the city council encourages Janee Williams to continue to work hard and to pursue her dreams, and the council wishes Janee Williams continued success in her future endeavors. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be signed by each member of the city council and executed in duplicate originals, with one original presented to Janee Williams and the other original filed in perpetuity in the office of the Clerk of Council for the city of Shreveport.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we will adopt this resolution with commendations to Mrs. Williams.
Second. Not, a motion made, the second. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passed.
if you would allow me to do so. Matt Howerton is with Congressman Mike Johnson's office. He's the district staff assistant, and I'd like to ask him to come forward, please.
Hello. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, Chairman Fleury, for the invitation, and want to say greetings to Councilman Everson. We actually got to meet at the 175th anniversary of the Greek Orthodox Church nearby, and good to see Councilman Jenkins, it's been a while.
Good to see you again.
And to the rest of the members that I haven't had the privilege to get to know, it's good to see you. I do see Attorney Bradford, it's good to see you at the transport as well as the mayor. Thank you to the city of Shreveport and the mayor for serving the people of Shreveport. Again, my name is Matt Howerton, I'm here with Congressman Mike Johnson's office. I want to say first, congratulations to Ms. Williams and her family, making the Congressional District Four very proud, and we look forward to continuing to see her success. First off, Congressman Mike Johnson greatly thanks you for your service to the city of Shreveport, to the parish of Caddo, and to the state of Louisiana. He's been working very hard to represent our district's values in Washington, D.C., following his monumental victory last December, when he received the largest margin of victory that our area has seen in 50 years, and won all 15 parishes. He believes in keeping his roots in the district, that's why he leaves his family every week, usually Monday, and flies up to D.C. and sleeps in a cot in his office, actually, and comes back on the weekends. In light of recent events, we find it more important than ever to highlight Congressman Mike Johnson's commitment to civility. This was actually the first initiative that the congressman took when he arrived in Congress. I'm going to just have you all pass the row. So when the congressman got to D.C., all the freshmen got together and had a meeting, and they actually got snowed in, so it was a little involuntary toward the end, but you can imagine all the Democrats and Republicans who are used to all the vitriol being snowed in, and they said, you know what, while we're here, let's go ahead and make use of this time, let's talk about what we want to see in Congress going forward. We're tired of the hatred, we're tired of the rhetoric, we're not enemies, we are fellow Americans. So they got together and basically everybody reiterated that desire to see a new culture in Washington. So the congressman was driving home, and he said, why not hold ourselves accountable to this? Let's put this in language and have everybody sign it and hold each other accountable, and make sure that the freshman class will not participate in the kind of unfortunate rhetoric that we've seen in the past. Fortunately, we saw 45, about 45 of 50 freshmen sign on to this bill, committing themselves to treating each other with dignity and respect and getting things done for the American people. I'm happy to report that now the commitment to civility boasts 120 or more signatures of members of Congress. We look forward to hopefully having a majority of Congress and even the president's signature. This includes everybody from the daughter of Dick Cheney, all the way to civil rights leader John Lewis. So it's really a bipartisan coalition. On the opposite side of that, you'll see the services that our office provides. Flags can be ordered through our website, mikejohnson.house.gov, with the option of being flown over the Capitol. We are happy to assist with grants. Of course, Congress got rid of earmarks, but we are happy to direct you to the resources that you need and even possibly letters of recommendation under some circumstances. The thing that probably takes up most of our district staff time is casework. Some of you know what this is. If a veteran has a problem with the VA, we're able to send basically a letter on behalf of the congressman asking them to try to work with the veteran to resolve the issue. Sometimes it's a very favorable thing. Just the other day, we had a veteran from Shreveport who, from his brother's explanation of his last doctor's meeting, only had a couple of weeks to live in a very severe tumor. The VA told him he had to go to Houston for treatment, and the citizen said, I can't afford to go to Houston for treatment all the time. So our question was, can y'all help him pay for transportation to Houston, or can he get the treatment here? And to our pleasant surprise, he has surgery scheduled in a couple of weeks in Shreveport at the VA Overton Brook, so we were very happy to see that. So that's just one example. And military academy nominations, we have some wonderful candidates for military academies, and I think about 15 or 20, and we're going to continue to work with y'all in partnership to make sure that every young man or woman who wants to apply has the opportunity to do so. Capitol tours is the final thing that we can offer. Any Capitol building other than the White House, we can pretty much do any timeframe, but the White House is a strict 90-day security clearance. Since this is the first time I've had the pleasure of addressing this body, I want to tell you about the congressman's committee appointments. One that we're very proud of is the Judiciary Committee, and this is one that probably has more authority than any other single committee. The congressman was uniquely qualified for this because of his background in constitutional law, which was a big responsibility of the prestigious committee. In that committee, he is appointed to the Subcommittee on Crime, Terrorism, Homeland Security, and Investigations, the Subcommittee on Immigration and Border Security, and he's also on the Natural Resources Committee, and was actually appointed as vice chairman of the Subcommittee on Oversight and Investigations, which is very unusual for a freshman to receive that appointment. And lastly, on the Natural Resources Committee, he is on the Subcommittee on Water, Power, and Oceans. Just some quick updates from D.C. From the start, Congressman Mike Johnson has been extremely, an extremely good steward of our tax dollars. Just two examples is two of our offices. The one at NSU is actually $1 a year, and the one at Fort Polk's NSU campus is also $1 a year. We brought the Congressional Art Competition back to the fourth congressional district for the first time in many years, and had some wonderful entries. And one of them, you wouldn't believe that a student made it, it was just a beautiful deer in the wilderness, and the detail was just really incredible, and it now proudly hangs in the halls of Congress. So we look forward to also working with you and the school boards and allowing that opportunity to as many students as possible. Our winner was able to travel to D.C. and visit with the congressman and participate in the competition nationwide. Congressman Mike Johnson was able to get his first and second bills passed relatively quickly, I think in the first three to six months. I believe he was the only freshman to have two bills passed at that time, and we were very proud of his quick productivity. The first bill was the Child Exploitation Act, and what that did was it closed a loophole that allowed acquittal of suspects in child pornography if intent could not be proved. We saw that as a miscarriage of justice, and were able to pass that bill about 350 to 50, and we're proud to do what our first and foremost duty is really, which is to protect the most defenseless among us. The second bill that was passed is the J. Bennett Johnston Waterway Extension Act, which passed by a vote almost unanimous, 400 to 1 roughly. So we had one holdout, but we are very proud of the bipartisan effort to pass that bill as well. The congressman has sponsored or co-sponsored over 50 pieces of legislation. This includes legislation for VA reform and a pay raise for our military, the first, the highest that they've seen in at least a decade. And, excuse me. One thing we're very proud of is that Congressman Mike Johnson has now held more town hall meetings than any, with the first to hold more town hall meetings than any other member of Congress. So he is in our district, he's with our people, he is at the meetings and engaging with our public. We even had a cooperative town hall meeting with State Representative Barbara Norton, two people that you wouldn't expect necessarily to always be together, and it was a wonderful experience, and he got to meet with several constituents and hear their concerns, so he always has an open ear. In closing, Congressman Mike Johnson has a servant's heart, and so does our office. His work ethic is really impeccable, and it rubs off on us. So we are ready to serve you, that is our focus every day. So feel free to stop by our office, which is off of Hospital Drive, right next to the Willis Knighton Hospital in Bossier. It's 2250 Hospital Drive. And so far, I can tell you that I've personally been able to help about 50 constituents with different federal agencies, and you magnify that by the rest of our staff. We've already, in our first 10 months, been able to help hundreds of our constituents, and we look forward to continuing to have that opportunity. For those who don't know, Congressional District Four is in the shape of a C. It basically goes from Caddo to Union, Caddo to Beauregard, and Beauregard to portions of St. Landry. To stay up to date with the office, please visit mikejohnson.house.gov and sign up for our newsletter. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to be here with you. Thank you all for your service, and God bless Shreveport.
Mr. Howerton. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Rappaport.
Thank you. Hi.
Good seeing you.
Appreciate you being here, and thank you for that very outstanding information report. Being familiar with the congressman, I would congratulate him on his work.
Thank you.
It's obvious through this documentary you gave us as well as through your expressions. And he did himself well by having you on his staff.
Thank you, Congressman.
Very articulate in how you express his work, and give him our best regards.
I certainly will, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Now we turn to the public hearing, 2018 proposed budgets. Public hearing is called to order on the proposed 2018 budget ordinances. This public hearing has been called to allow the public to comment on the proposed 2018 budget ordinances that are to be adopted no later than December 15, 2017. I understand that the administration does not have a presentation, but is that correct, Mr. Crawford?
That's correct. Mr. Chairman, if you remember correctly, Mayor Tyler presented her executive budget on October the 10th to this body.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Does any member of the public want to comment on these ordinances? What was that?
I don't know if this is required, but Ken Craft, 157 Archer Avenue. As an interested budget geek who went to the hearings Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and we hope your colleague is doing better in the missing Mr. Bowman, I really think they'll put a lot of time and effort into it, it was well-prepared, and I really think that email I sent you is gonna come true. We won't know for a year about the revenues, so let's make a smooth transition of what would be a good comparison, kinda like Mosqueter Bobbie Burgess who danced right into the Lawrence Welk Show, let's just dance into 18. But I think a year from now, you'll find out you're doing really well, and the main thing is to shore up the operating budget reserve, which the mayor mentioned only Sunday. And we won't lose another bond tick, but if we don't shore it up, we won't upgrade it either. And eventually, not yet, but when we go forward with capital projects for the basic streets and drainage and stuff, it should be nice to have an upgrade in the bond tick. And the final thing I want to say, it's a little down the road, but go ahead and pass 189, I'm just gonna say it now, the resolution on the April 28 election, I think it's something we need, those things go back years and years and years. Thank you.
Mr. Craft, Mr., I'm sorry, General James W. Graves, you have asked to speak on the 114.
This is Mr. Chairman, are you still in the public hearing?
I thought 114 was on the ordinance.
Is it?
No.
It's not.
No, we're still in public hearing, then we need to go to adding one such.
Yes, but 114 is the airport.
It is.
I think he's legit.
Yeah.
Stand up, man.
I'm supporting.
That's right, don't be.
Don't let those lawyers talk you into something.
Don't let them lawyers push you around, Oliver.
That's it.
And Mr. Chairman, on the counter on the wall over there, I had asked if I could be granted.
And I have, you come forward, give me three minutes, and I'm on, I hadn't had a chance to ask Councilman Jenkins if he would support additional three minutes, but I'm just hoping that he will, because I will ask for your additional three, but let's do what we got right now, which is three minutes.
I'm happy to give the Air Force a little time. They've always needed a little.
See, he came right on, he came right on. General Graves, you go ahead and start, give me three minutes, and then we'll turn to Councilman Jenkins.
For lifeline.
Yes, sir. Chairman Fleury, members of the council, Madam Mayor, my name is James Graves. I rise today only as an individual concerned citizen. I reflect, however, and ask you to register the righteous opposition of your constituents to the 2018 Airport Enterprise Fund budget. The fortieth president of the United States challenged us to ask if government is the solution to our problems, or if government is the problem. Such is our Airport Enterprise Fund. In the brief three years of the current Airport Authority leadership has been in place, their budget has burgeoning. They are building a San Francisco-size bureaucratic empire on the books and on the backs of a Shreveport-size customer base. With respects, Downtown Airport doesn't have a business or a revenue problem, Downtown Airport has a bloated bureaucracy and bookkeeping problem. Public documents like this 2017 Shreveport budget, available to the public, revealed that between 2015 and 2017 Airport Authority total appropriations doubled, administrative salaries nearly doubled, and professional salaries nearly tripled. We learned last Friday that for 2018, they now want to grow a salary of $47,000 to $81,000 and create a new position entirely, paying $100,500 a year. They are building a bureaucratic paradise of high government salaries, low responsibilities, little accountability, and almost no oversight. With apologies, Mr. Crawford was right last Friday when he said, "We don't scrutinize these things closely." That's the problem. No one does. He was dead wrong, however, when he said, "Because it's not the taxpayers' money." It may not come through your general funds, ladies and gentlemen, but every penny comes from your citizens, constituents, customers, and taxpayers, and we're tired of paying for it. This must stop now.
Listen, for those that aren't regulars here, code rules of this gathering are not to applaud or make any remarks relative to the gentleman speaking, no matter how you stand on that. It's inappropriate for a legislative body to have to put up with that, and I don't, no prejudgment on you, General, but I just.
Thank you, Congressman.
That was cleared up earlier already in this meeting.
Old habit, sir.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would like to offer.
Just a minute, please, General.
I'd like to move that we extend his remarks for three minutes.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Please vote.
You have to vote on it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Please vote. And that carries. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Worse still, this summer, the Airport Authority began a campaign of confiscation, rising rents and rates, costs and fees, inspections, appraisals, registrations, and intrusions, to compel us to feed this endless bureaucratic appetite. They engorge it further by trying to convert private property to public ownership, contrary to law, the Fifth Amendment taking clause of the US Constitution, and the even greater protections of private property and restrictions on government overreach found in the Declaration of Rights of the Constitution of this great state of Louisiana. This, too, must stop now. The Airport Authority leadership has forgotten that in America, public officials work for the people, not the other way around. They have also forgotten that we are a city that has an airport authority, not the other way around. A few of the customers of your airports came on short notice to demonstrate their united opposition to the actions of the Airport Authority. Would you please raise your hands to identify yourselves to the council? To show that opposition, would you please stand to make it up record? Those of you that raised your hands. Please have a seat. In fairness, ladies and gentlemen, if there were any who raised their hands earlier who support the actions of the Airport Authority, please stand to demonstrate your support. Let the record reflect that no one has stood. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I urge you in the strongest terms to immediately initiate a council-directed audit of the Shreveport Airport Authority from base year 2015 to the present. Reject the 2018 Airport Enterprise Fund budget. Reduce the spending of the Airport Authority to the 2015 baseline budget before the beginning of this bloated growth. Repudiate the misguided initiatives of this misled institution. And finally, return the ownership of our airports to its rightful place, the citizens of this city and community. May God bless this city with the rule of law, as he has blessed America. I thank you for this opportunity to give service to that cause. Subject to your questions and comments, Mr. Chairman, I yield the balance of my tongue.
Wow. Any questions?
A lot, but this is.
Discussion.
Well.
Thank you, General.
But we hope that you'll have opportunity, you made a lot, and you said a lot, and some of the things we did not consider, but I think once we review it, we may invite you back to engage some questions.
I would be honored to return, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, General. And just for the record, today is not, we do not intend to vote on these ordinances today.
Right.
That'll be the first meeting in December, and so there are opportunities to put in amendments on all budget items between now and then. And obviously, for me, I got a lot of information today, and I need to turn that into things that I can operate with in terms of specifics and issues on the budget specifically, so you know, you can expect to hear from us in terms of specifically what changes relative to our proposed budget need to be addressed. And I understand there's some other overarching issues relative to the hangars and the rest of it, but that I don't believe is specifically addressed in this budget, but there may be other concerns there that we're not identifying.
The Air Force is here to serve, sir.
Mayor Tyler, did you have?
And just for the record, as the mayor of the city, I hope that you will at least be open to the other side of this issue. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, General. Let's see where we are.
Mr. Thompson. I win, and I gotta close, but I have no others here to speak on the budget. Going once, going twice, no one else to speak on the budget ordinances. The public hearing is now closed. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Chairman, I think we're now into adding legislation to the agenda. There is one item to be considered, it's ordinance 142, an ordinance to amend chapter 102 concerning vehicles for hire. It's in Article 3A Operating Regulation, Section 102-88 of the Code, relative to transportation network companies and otherwise providing with respect there to.
Can I, can I ask, since the, both of the authors of this are not in attendance today, this is, obviously it's to be added today, but it would be to then layover for a final vote.
That's correct.
It's a two-reader, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. In that case, I'd move to add to the agenda.
Well, after the, after we get the responses.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of or against adding ordinance number 142 to the agenda? Seeing none?
I will speak.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes. Is there some compelling reason that anybody here is aware of why it needs to be added today?
No.
Mr. Clerk? Did they make any expressions on why they wanted to expedite this?
I think that at least one of the authors thought that it would be on the agenda. I understand that enough information was not provided to actually draft it, and therefore it was drafted at the last minute, and so the request is to add it.
I certainly wouldn't want to put anybody in the council office in a bind because I was gonna vote against it, but, I mean, that's just adding it to the agenda, I just don't see the compelling, they're not even here to stand up and say why they want to add it, but.
The chair has received a motion, Councilman.
Well, after we hear.
There's no, there's no one to speak.
Okay.
Do I have a motion, Councilman?
I mean, I'd move to add it.
Do I have a second?
The city of Shreveport might have something to add to your question.
I can add to that, to Councilman Jenkins' request. There was a request or inquiry from the council lady, Councilwoman Lynch, on Thursday, while it wasn't on the agenda. There was a bit of a miscommunication between Council Bowman and I, and he, the information needed to make the amendment was not relayed in time, and so our office prepared it on Friday afternoon to get it up in accordance with the wishes of both Councilwoman Lynch and Councilman Bowman.
I certainly wouldn't want to penalize them for their medical reasons why they're not here, so if that's truly the case, no.
I think that's the two. Do that, I second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Chair recognizes, Councilman Bradford, second the motion.
Okay. Now, we're gonna have a sort of abbreviated council meeting on next week. Does that mean that this would be eligible for?
Not next week, it's on the month of December.
December?
That's the second meeting.
That's the December meeting that we read. You don't affect this legislation.
Okay, so it, okay, I was thinking if it was introduced today, then it'll layover for a week.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Okay, all right, that's my question, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, second. Any discussion?
It does not. It does not.
It's be unanimous.
It's to be unanimous.
Okay. Did you, was that intended vote? No.
Okay.
So it is not added.
It is not added. Not added. Okay. Then let's see, public comments at this time, we have the following requests. Rob Bruceard would like to speak on 177. Rob, would you please come?
Thanks, Rob Bruceard, the 451 Santa Cruz Report.
Rob, stay about that far from your mic, there's some tape on the floor, and we'll get a real good pickup on the audio. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Mayor, council members, this ordinance that you're going to be voting on today about the allowing the Maryland's to open earlier and close later, I would encourage all of you to vote to postpone a vote on this. We have not had an opportunity as a neighborhood to discuss this. We are having a fish fry tonight. I know, Oliver, you've been invited, I would invite all the rest of you to come, so that we can have this conversation in front of our Neighborhood Association, so that we can debate whether we want that to happen. I'm very concerned, however, Madam Mayor, Chief Crump, about the DUI grants, and if we're going to allow an establishment to open for alcohol consumption at 6 o'clock in the morning, are we indirectly encouraging people to drink that early? And if so, you know, are we, are they gonna possibly fall into the net of DUI checkpoints?
Driving while intoxicated is still illegal.
Excuse me, it's my turn to speak.
I'm just answering.
Thank you. Yeah, but I mean, the point of it is, is that the resolution would, would it not be encouraging people to drink that early, 6 o'clock in the morning? Or just that they? Or just that they have the opportunity to start drinking at 6:00 in the morning, and that's the same day that church is going on across the street at First Baptist Church? And that it would be allowed to continue till 10:00 at night, where the next day is a school day? You know, I think there are just some issues that we need to discuss as a neighborhood and offer an opinion to our council member and to the rest of you as council members. And because it does concern me that somebody could possibly drink that early and end up getting a DUI, we don't want that. Second, you know, I heard the general speaking about, you know, representation, and I guess that's what we've been debating here for months and a couple of years about, you know, have you got solid input from your constituents? And do you want our input? I think it's something that we need to ask ourselves seriously. Do you want our input? We're the largest neighborhood association in this city. We've offered our input over and over, and I'm not hearing that people are listening. And so whether it's this particular ordinance or other ordinances, you know, just please, please give us your ear. And tonight would be a good opportunity for you to hear what the people think. I don't know what they think yet, so I can't tell you. I don't know, because we haven't had an opportunity to meet and discuss it. You know, I saw the time expired.
Well, I was trying to give you.
Sure. I appreciate it. I'm gonna go, because I know I got cut off after three minutes last time. You know, I know that y'all selectively grant people extended time, but that's okay.
But you didn't ask. Now, wait a minute. Wait a minute, you didn't ask. That's just an ask, then.
Sure, sure.
Do you need additional time?
No, 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 I'm good with it. I'm good. I can live within the time.
Don't take that paintbrush and broad brush it.
This is what happened last time.
And Rob, if it's appropriate to answer your questions, what I did after we, because this has been on the agenda already now for several weeks, and so what I did is, after the first concern was mentioned, I asked the police for a backlog of any complaints about this event in the past. This is about the seventh year this event has taken place. There have been seven phone calls in the past seven years, so roughly one phone call every year about, you know, any sort of noise or disturbance, which is not an elevated number, really. It's not a very unusual number. And so, but what I did in order to be, you know, more limiting and offer a compromise that might work better for the neighborhood is offered this amendment number one today, which reduces the hours from, originally, what it was, was recommended that it be, that it mimic the state permit. The state permits are typically issued for a two-day period, and so we cut it down to a one-day period and limited the hours instead of 6:00 a.m. to midnight to 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., which falls within the noise ordinance, which, you know, after 10:00 p.m. the noise restrictions go up. And so that seemed like a way to better protect the neighborhood. So that's what we have as amendment number one today. I don't know if that had been posted earlier, so I want to make sure.
Well, I mean, you know, we're just hearing about it, but by the same token, I appreciate how often y'all come to our neighborhood and the economic benefit of having a parade. You know, we also have to pick up trash, you know? And by the way, we only have two more times, and I think two people appear volunteered to help, so we're looking forward to that. But picking up trash after the parade, our whole neighborhood, not our whole, but a big area of our neighborhood gets impacted by that kind of parade. And I did get five phone calls, okay, from constituents who are concerned about the sound and also the alcohol thing. And a couple of them were church members, and they just felt a moral dissatisfaction that we would offer something like that on a Sunday, you know? And so, you know, I understand the parade's on a Sunday, but by the same token, you know, y'all have a park over there in Highlands, don't you?
We do, and the parade goes by the park.
And couldn't you have that party over there and the noise and let Highland area residents enjoy their festival and their festive attitude and atmosphere over there in that park? Mr. Everson?
It's in the title. Sorry. I didn't. Please should be aware that that's incorrect. I'm sorry, I'm being told there was a mistake and a clerical error in the amendment. I apologize.
But, I mean, if y'all have a park in Highland, it's the Highland Parade, you know?
So, Bronmore doesn't want to be included in it?
I didn't say that. I said, have you ever considered having it in the Highland Park?
It started and ended, and it started and ended all in Highland for years, and it grew to the present location a few years ago. I'm not in charge of the parade.
No, but if you remember, y'all just okayed a big old storage facility in that, in that very park where a lot of the parking would take place, remember?
I believe I did.
Yeah, okay.
Clearly, you did, too.
Yeah, and so, you know, I'm saying that maybe you've outgrown it with that new development, and maybe you should have it in the park where, you know, you have the facility.
Doesn't appear to impact it this year.
I'm sorry?
Doesn't appear to impact it this year, from what I understand, but that's something that maybe, you know, again, I'm not the organizer of that event. If you want to discuss that with the organizers of the event.
Jeff, come to our meeting tonight. We'll feed you fried catfish, and we can discuss it then.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll be at this meeting, but.
We'll hold it open for you till 7:00, 7:30?
I appreciate it. Maybe I'll consult with your council representative.
We've already invited him.
Okay.
Okay, well, let's move on.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Flurry.
Sammy Mears wants to speak on 191. State your name and address, please, and you have three minutes.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101, apartment M110. I come today with something to say about the Alan Crump situation. First of all, we all believe in the men and women of the police department, and they deserve to be under the charge of a police chief who will leave them in the right place and the right direction. Every morning, residents wake up and hope to leave their homes and to come back home and find out that they were never robbed nor burglarized. Is hoping enough, or did you forget about prayer? Because prayer is a very important thing instead of just hoping. It's true that the Shreveport homicide and other violent crimes rates are on a real breaking pace, and other crimes could be on the increase just as well. That is very possible. But just because the increase could happen, and of course, we hope it doesn't, but just because it might, that doesn't mean that it's the fault of Alan Crump, because it's not. I'll just say that right now. Now, just stop and think for a moment. How would you feel if you were in his situation on October 30th, and you were forced into a situation and being judged about what you didn't do? You'd feel like you were being taken advantage of, and that's just what you're doing today. You're judging, and that's not right. It's very disrespectful, and I don't think that should be tolerated. At least he should be given a second chance. If it didn't, if it doesn't work out at that time, then maybe the removal should come about, but he does deserve a second chance, because we all deserve second chances. It might not mean anything to you, but it does to me and to a lot of people that were telling me that he deserves a second chance. The people and the city council are 100% supporting our police department as far as our public safety, and one little mistake will not put the earth on the critical list. It's like it happens like this. Spare the rod and spoil the x-ray with hair.
Thank you. We will now have no executive ordinance be considered for today, and there are no items on the consent agenda. For introduction, Mr. Thompson, please continue.
On the consent agenda for adoption, we have resolutions 184 and 185. Motion to adopt the consent agenda would be in order.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? End of motion is passed.
Mr. Chairman, we're now under ordinances, under resolution on second reading and final passage. The first is Resolution 177 with an amendment. We made a mistake with the amendment, and there might be a motion by Mr. Everson to postpone until later in the meeting until we can correct.
I would like to move to postpone till later in the meeting so they can correct the mistake that was just identified in the amendment.
Second. Second. Any discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes.
We're now under Resolution 182. It authorizes a matter to execute a cooperative purchasing agreement between the city and Region 8 Education Service Center for the purpose of allowing the city to have an option to make purchases when it is in the best interest of the city.
Second. Second, back to Councilman Jenkins. Councilman Everson makes motion. Any discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes.
Resolution 187 requests a Metropolitan Plan and Commission through its executive director to provide a list of the properties downsized with the adoption of the Shreveport Unified Development Code.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think it was downzoned, but.
Downzoned.
Downzoned.
Please vote for the record only. That's clearly written correctly.
Motion passes.
Resolution 188 authorizes a mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between the city and North Louisiana Health Coalition for the purpose of voluntarily agreeing to assist in implementation.
Second. Any discussion? End of motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, before we consider Resolution 189, I'm required to read this statement. Mr. Chairman, pursuant to Louisiana Revised Statute 4219.1, the city is required to give advance notice and shell announce to the public during a public meeting the notice of the date, time, and place of the city's intention to levy a new tax to increase, renew, or continue a tax ought to authorize the calling of an election for a submittal of such question to the voters of the city. Resolution number 189 of 2017 is being introduced today, November the 14th, 2017, and should be postponed until December the 22nd, 2017, for adoption by the city council. Resolution 189 orders and calls a special election to be held Saturday, April the 28th, 2018, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of the city propositions to authorize a continuation, levy, and collection of special ad valorem taxes therein, and to also authorize the city to continue to levy and collect a special ad valorem tax for the continuation and the maintenance of a police three-platoon system originally authorized by Article 14, Section 12 of the Louisiana Constitution of 1921, and lastly, to authorize the city attorney's office to make application to the state bond commission in connection therewith. The city shall do the following no more than 60 days nor less than 30 days before the December the 22nd, 2017, public meeting. Number one, publish public notice of the date, time, and place of the meeting and the official journal of the city. This required publication is projected to be published on Friday, November the 17th, 2017. Two, the city's intention to authorize the ordering and calling of a special election for a submittal of propositions to the voters of the city to allow the city to continue levy and collect special ad valorem taxes and shall be announced to the public during the course of the public meeting of the city. This announcement today fulfills this requirement. Number three, notice of such meeting shall be written and hand-delivered or transmitted by email to each voting member of the city council and to each state senator and representative in whose district all or a portion of the political subdivision is located. Karen Strand, Assistant City Attorney, will send out this email notification this week to the appropriate officials. Therefore, the public is hereby notified in the city council of the city of Shreveport intends today, Tuesday, November the 14th, 2017, to introduce Resolution number 189 of 2017 to authorize the calling of a special election of the city of Shreveport. On Monday, November the 27th, and Monday, December the 11th, 2017, during the city council administrative conferences, and on Tuesday, November the 28th, and Tuesday, December the 12th, 2017, the resolution shall lay over to allow for the required notice of publication, and no action shall be taken at these meetings. Resolution number 189 of 2017 ordering and calling the special election shall be considered for adoption at the city council's regular meeting, which was rescheduled because of the holidays, to be held on Friday, December the 22nd, 2017, beginning at 3:00 p.m. in government chambers and government floors of 505 Travis Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. Mr. Chairman, the motions are in order at this time to introduce and postpone Resolution number 189 of 2017 until December the 22nd, 2017, for adoption by the city council pursuant to the requirements stated herein.
Do you have a motion to introduce?
Second.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote. End of motion carries. Now, I have a motion now to, and a second?
Two.
Postpone.
Well, the first motion was.
The motion is introduced.
That included, it was an inclusive motion?
That's what I thought it was.
It is.
It was an inclusive motion, Mr. Chairman.
Well, yeah, that's right. That motion is carried.
So, motion 189 has been introduced and postponed.
And postponed.
That was in ten of my motion.
Resolution 191 is a resolution to express confidence in the police department, no confidence in the chief of police, and to request the mayor to take steps necessary to appoint a new police.
At this time, I asked Councilman Bradford if I may speak to the issue. Councilman Bradford, I have two things I'd like to say. First of all, I want to commend you for your courage to bring and debate and to discuss. Yesterday, you said that it was not personal or politically, political concerning what you were trying to accomplish here. But what I have asked, I'm asking today, that you postpone or table this motion at this time. And the reason that I'm asking you to do that, first, I don't believe that I'm able to receive the answers to the questions that I have, because I had reached out to get additional information to, this is a very important decision, and I want to be fair, but I want to be informed. And when I reached out to the questions that I had concerning the issue with Chief Crump, I was told that I was not able to get the information, because this is a criminal matter, and I wouldn't be able to get the answers that I need before our vote. And the second thing that I'm asking you to table for is the fact of the matter, it's about the second floor of this building, this complex, AKA, as known as the mayor's office. Mayor Tyler came on board at the same time we did, and she introduced us to a word that was called metrics. Metrics. She would set on many occasions to me that I am requiring metrics, but I'm also holding people accountable. And I take her at a word every time that I have been to the second floor, and I've been many times in the three years that I've been on this council. I always left that meeting informed and confident that this mayor was on the right track. She allowed me to say what I needed to be said, that needed to be said, even though sometimes we were direct opposite. But I believe that she will hold this chief to the metrics, to the high standard. She told us in the budget meeting on Sunday, while we were going over the police budget, about two years now, the police department's citations have gone down, and she assured us that she will investigate. Now, every year, they've had a cause. The first year that went down, they said we lost our robocop that was writing all the tickets, that he went to the state police. Could have been, I'm not sure, but this year, we're not sure. The mayor seems to think that we've had to focus on all these. The mayor seems to think that we've had to focus on all these crimes and homicides, and our manpower's been there. But she told you today that she's received a grant, and I think it's from Louisiana Highway Commission, to work on DWIs and speeding. Councilman Jenkins said Sunday that the number-one call he gets is speeding, and I do too. I receive a lot, and we passed an ordinance where we would double the fines on speeding in neighborhoods. But we've got to... If I was to say two things that Chief Crump might learn from the Dale Carnegie training, how to win friends and influence people, is that he needs to do a better job communicating. But let me tell you what. I've got confidence in Mayor Tyler that she will guide this, as though he might be a principal in a school that maybe needs some help, but you just... I believe we ought to give him an opportunity and her an opportunity to work with him about his metrics and work with him and to be a better communicator. And at this time, I'm just asking you to please, let's just table this today.
Mister Chairman, thank you for your comments. We hadn't had a chance to speak, but I really appreciate your comments and your consideration of what is about to take place. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna trust that we can discuss this further. So, in that vein, Mister Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we will table Resolution 191.
I second. Any discussion? Let's vote.
I don't see the purpose in allowing this to hang out there. What does that do?
The chairman made some expression that I agree with, especially in the first part. He said there was some information that he was trying to ascertain that had not come forward yet. I respect that. And I think the timetable is could be simple. That we could, if we delay it for a minute, I have no problem with that.
So, let me clarify the motion. Is it to postpone, or is it to table? Because those are two different things. I heard table.
I did say table. What's the difference, Mr. Clerk?
Normally, when we postpone, it comes back up at the next meeting.
Okay.
When we table, it stays on the table until it's removed.
Okay, postpone, come back up, table?
Stays on the table until it's removed.
Okay. He mentioned that there was, there was some issues that was, that involved criminalization which may not be resolved by the next meeting.
If, if, if the item is tabled, it can be removed at any time by the council and voted on. If it is postponed, it will automatically come up at the next meeting.
But given his explanation, the next meeting may, it may not, may not be enough time with...
So, I assume that you want to table it then?
Table it, yes.
Yes.
That was, that was my, that was my thinking, that it'll be tabled.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
Order for the clerk. Only the individual that's the author can withdraw it, correct?
Yes, of course, it could be, it could be a motion to adopt, and you could vote it down, but just to withdraw it...
Just to withdraw it. Okay.
Mister Chairman, I think, I think I would to... That's, that if, it could be withdrawn at any time, but I mean, we cannot ascertain the information that you referred to as well as some information that I'm curious about as you spoke. My motion is to table at this time, and withdrawn is always an option, but I think I need to at least let it be there, and if we see where we can work this out, then we're working out. But I think at this time, I don't feel compelled to withdraw.
Okay, Councilman Kirk. The motion is second.
And I got one other point of order. And abstaining, if somebody was to abstain, whether that's legitimate or not, it requires, since we only have five members here, it requires four positive votes to table it?
You have to have a majority of the individuals present to table. So, that would need...
Three?
Three.
But I, I think that you need a reason to abstain. One would need a reason to abstain under our rules.
I'm aware of that. Very well aware of that part of my... Copy, but I'm good. Okay. I can't put forth an alternate piece of legislation because the only thing I'm interested in is withdrawing, and he pointed out the only...
Well, but if the motion to table fails, what happens?
Then another motion would be in order.
You'll vote on the motion then.
I know what I would do. I'm all good with that.
Okay, let's vote. Motion to table. Okay. And that fails. Okay.
Was, was there a motion to adopt?
Not yet. That was tabled. There has not been a motion to adopt.
Well, I'm in order to understand to make a motion to adopt. That's my motion.
Do we have a second? Okay. Motion is out second. Please vote. And the motion fails. Yeah.
Mister Chairman, we are now into introduction of resolutions, but I think that we could be, go back to 177 if Mr. Everson is ready.
177, okay.
Yes, now we've got the amendment. Apparently, there was a clerical mistake in the amendment, and it's been corrected. So, I would... Do we need to make a mo... We're still in...
Let me read it, and then I'll go through it. If you're ready to proceed on that.
And we're still within the same section, though, so we don't have to go any suspension of rules or anything.
Resolution 177, it suspends certain provisions of Chapter 10 and any applicable provisions of the Shreveport Unified Development Code relative to sale, dispensing, and consumption of alcoholic beverages at Merrill's Place, Boyd-Monica Cross Celebration, February the ninth through February the eleventh, 2018. Mister Chairman, there's one amendment, and Amendment Number Two is the one that the author wants read. It's, the amendment number two would be to change the time and reduce the days of the Monte Cross Celebration to be held only on February the eleventh, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
So moved to, on Amendment Number One.
Uh, Number Two.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Amendment Number Two now? Sorry, Amendment Number Two.
Second. Second by Councilman Corbin. Any discussion?
Yes, just briefly. Let's make this very clear despite what was said earlier. We're talking about the ability to have this event outside during these hours. This event can go on inside regardless of this piece of legislation.
That's correct.
So, there's a little bit of discussion that might have been misleading, that we're condoning a behavior, but that is not the case because the ordinance, I mean, our laws always provide that this is legal as is. It's the opportunity for them to extend out into their apartment. So, let's make that just, I want to make sure everybody understands.
That's true.
Despite the assertions, that's really the reality of what we're talking about.
Let's vote. And it passes.
And so moved as amended.
Second. Second by Councilman Corbin. Any discussion? I think we gotta vote.
Do you need it?
There we go. Please vote. And the motion carries.
Mister Chairman, we're now into introduction of resolutions. We have one to be introduced, Resolution 190, the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city and Carr, Ritz, and Ingram LLC for the purpose of an external audit of the city for fiscal year January the first, 2017, through December the third, first, 2017.
Submit for introduction.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote. Motion.
Okay, as I said, Mister Chairman.
Yes.
We're now into introduction of ordinances. Ordinance 138, amends the 2017 capital improvements budget. Ordinance 139, amend sections in Chapter 14, animals and files of the city of Shreveport. Code of ordinances relative to implementation of a trap neuter return program. Ordinance 140 concerns case number C-103-17. It rezones property located on the southeast corner of St. Vincent and Oakley Drive from R-17 Single Family Residential District to C-1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And Ordinance 141 concerning case number C-104-17. It rezones property located on the west side of Linwood Avenue, 240 feet south of Aquarius Street, from C-3 General Commercial District to C-4 Heavy Commercial District.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Introduce.
Introduce. Introduce, as the... Excuse me. And that passes.
We're now under ordinances on second reading and final passage. The first is Ordinance 125. It amends the city of Shreveport 2017 Downtown Entertainment Development Special Revenue Fund Budget.
Submit.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote.
I did.
Councilman Jenkins. Okay. And that's adopted.
Ordinance 26, amends the 2017 Capital Improvement Budget.
Submit.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote. And is approved.
Ordinance 127 also amends the 2017 Capital Improvements Budget.
Submit. Second. Chair? Any discussion? Please vote.
I just want to make sure this is the capital improvements on the utility project.
That's...
Okay. I started glazing over.
And is approved.
To make sure I was paying attention correctly.
Adopted. Mister Burke?
Ordinance 128 makes certain technical amendments relating to the junior lien bonds as set forth in Ordinance Number 53 of 2017 by amending the 2017 D Bonds to senior lien and junior lien, and junior bonds, and ratifying the following terms of the bonds issued pursuant to the ordinance.
Motion to...
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Jenkins. Any discussion?
We're not postponing this anymore. We're ready to go on this one.
That's for adoption.
Okay, let's vote. And that adopted.
Ordinance 137 authorizes a mayor and Shreveport Transit Management...
Second. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that's approved.
We're now into Ordinance 89A. It concerns case number 72-17. It rezones property located on the northeast corner of Elbe Road and Golf Ridge Drive from RE Residential Estate Zoning District to C-1 Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District with one amendment.
So moved to adopt Amendment Number One.
Second.
Second, then, by Councilman Everson. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Sure, it's good to go, huh?
And the motion is adopted.
Motion to adopt Ordinance 89A.
Second.
Any discussion? Well, let's vote.
Motion, gentlemen, approved.
Ordinance 129 concerning zoning case number C-87-17. It rezones property located on the southwest corner of Fourth Street and Market Street from IMU Industrial Mixed Use District to I-2 Heavy Industrial District.
Hold on one sec. Submit.
Second. Second by Councilman Jenkins. Any discussion? Please vote.
Wait once. Oh, yeah, I just want to make sure I was thinking of the same case.
And that's approved.
Ordinance 130 concerns zoning case number C-88-17. It rezones property located east of Clyde-Fat Parkway, bounded by Cross Bayou and the Red River, from N-A Natural Areas District to I-2 Heavy Industrial District.
So moved, Mister Chairman. Second. Any discussion? Please vote. And that's approved.
Ordinance 131 concerns case number C-89-17. It rezones property located on the east side of Clyde-Fat Parkway at Jack Wills Boulevard and the Red River, from N-A Natural Areas District to I-1 Light Industrial District.
So moved. And second. And any discussion? Please vote. And that is adopted.
Ordinance 132 concerns zoning case number C-90-17. It rezones property located on the east side of Pines Road, 731 feet south of the Arbor Road, from R-112 Single Family Residential District to C-1 Neighborhood Commercial District.
So moved, Mister Chairman. Second. Any discussion? Please vote. And that's adopted.
Ordinance Number 133 concerning, concerns zoning case number C-91-17. It rezones property located on the east side of Avalon Drive, 165 feet south of Boyd Drive, from R-17 Single Family Residential District to C-1 Neighborhood Commercial District.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. We'll wait now.
Who are you waiting on? It was adopted unanimous vote, right?
Yes.
It froze up on us.
Ordinance 134 is concerned zoning case number C-92-17. It rezones property located on the west side of Mansfield Road, north and south of New Moon Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. And that's approved.
Ordinance 135 concerns zoning case number C-93-17. It rezones property on the north side of Alber Marley Drive, 301 feet east of Lion Avenue, from R-15 Single Family Residential District to C-1 Neighborhood Commercial District.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Please vote. And that's approved.
Ordinance 136 concerns zoning case number C-94-17. It rezones property located on the south side of Rutherford Street. Eighty-nine... It rezones property located on the south side of Rutherford Street, eighty-nine feet east of Oak Street, from C two, Carter Commercial District to R two Multi Family Residential District.
Before I make a motion, I did want just a brief clarification on this. Was there, um, I know that it said that there was nobody that spoke in opposition to this at the initial hearing, but were there notifications sent to all the surrounding property owners? This doesn't sound like a use that would be, I mean, this is a use that I don't imagine would have a lot of opposition, but it is something different, and I just want to make sure that notification...
Yes, sir.
Went out to the surrounding property.
It was. Yes. Within three hundred feet, we'd send out notifications.
Okay, great. Um, and the constituents in that area are typically pretty, pay pretty close attention to these.
Sure.
So, I just wanted to make sure. I haven't heard from anybody in opposition to this, but I appreciate the verification of it. So I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second. Any discussion?
Let's vote.
And it's adopted.
Mr. Chairman, those are all of the items on the regular agenda. I'm not aware of any matter on the table, the agenda to be removed from the table.
Well, then, we have no property standard appeals, no ABO appeals, there are no MPC or ZBA appeals. Mr. Thompson, are there any reports from officers, boards, or committees? And looking at the old clock on the wall, I believe it's time the clerks report.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have no report.
Okay. Mayor? The irony of it all, do you have some communication?
Yes, sir, I just have one last communication. At each of the, uh, your places, we've placed our spa department, Mrs. Shelley Regal and her staff, have given you a little Christmas something, but it's really kind of chocolates or candies, but that's just to remind you to be sure that you come and bring your friends and your family down to our second annual Shreveport Spirit of the Season. And as you can see, the festivities are many, and that's on November the twenty-first, next Tuesday evening at six o'clock. And we have live music performances by Zion Baptist Church, Southwood High School, Shreveport Community Church, uh, some soloists, and we're asking that you come and bring your family, and let's enjoy this season. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Selle, you're up first on public...
I think I'll pass.
Okay. Was there any council members with distant communications before I go?
I, I would, earlier, when the, I can't remember the name now of who gave the prayer, but, um...
Clarence Plant Tree.
Yes, absolutely. Um, I wanted to express thanks for, for that, for that prayer, and also, in that prayer, obviously, he mentioned, you know, hoping that Councilman Bowman is feeling better today. We also want to include Councilwoman Lynch, who'll have surgery tomorrow.
Yes.
And also maybe a preemptive prayer for Councilman Jenkins, who is the only member of council who has not had some type of surgery in the last three weeks. So, um...
I'm in a good, I'm in a good spot right now.
Let's just watch out for him, because it seems like it's your turn.
Everybody else has had it but me this one, so that's pretty good.
Your turn.
You better watch out.
Well, maybe I won't go to that Broadmore Neighborhood Association just to make sure that, you know, my bets are maximized opportunities for success. All right. Melvin, Slack. Was there any other council member for a week minute? Melvin, you have some time to speak, you have, believe you signed up to speak. Do you want to pass or just... Okay, you have three minutes, in a second.
First, giving all glory and giving all honor and giving all praise to my Lord and Savior, whose name is Jesus Christ. Let me say something on behalf of my good friend and my classmate, where I served as class president in a Baptist theological seminary. Brother Alan Crump is a very humble man, very nice man, he's, he has the best character you can ever imagine, of what I've seen as a, as a man of his character. And believe it or not, if I can just break something down to y'all, since I've got some listeners now. The reason all this violence is taking place is because we as leaders done made this take place, and what I mean by that, we have given the citizens, like the young man said earlier, given them twenty-two hours out of twenty-four hours to drink alcohol. They getting drunk, they tearing up yield signs, they tearing up speed limit signs, they tearing up stop signs, they tearing up all type of road signs, we're going to have to keep them, keep them available because of everybody drinking and getting drunk. Okay, five things can happen whenever you consume alcohol or liquor, too much of it anyway. You can get a DUI driving on the influence, DWI driving while intoxicated, you can actually kill somebody for being impaired, somebody can kill you for being impaired, and the last result, which we all know, you going to jail. So, don't nobody really benefit from this, but the more the jail, you know, the more people are going, and the police are going to benefit from that, even though I don't have anything against them. But that's all the people that's going to benefit from it, because if you go out in the streets of Shreveport after twelve o'clock, which I do from twelve to six every night, I'm out in the street watching people drinking, getting drunk, getting in cars, tearing up stuff, committing domestic abuse violence, which that's going to pick up with people getting drunk and drinking alcohol and liquor and consuming too much of it, because people going to the clubs, coming home, the kids being bad, different things going on, and boom, there you go. You got people being drunk and full of that liquor, and boom, there's a big fight going on. So, all of this, all the kind of chaos and crime is going to pick up due to the fact of the alcohol and liquor, and even though this might make a lot of people laugh, which is not funny to me, but if you just initiate even spearhead marijuana here in Shreveport, Louisiana, you wouldn't have this crime, because that, that's a whole other story. But anyway, that would alleviate a lot of crime, if you just think about it, but make a long story short back on Alan Crump. Give him a second chance, instead of just keeping it on the table and postponing it, you need to take it all the way off the table, because nobody's up here perfect. Nobody's perfect. People done stole money and every different, all different things, and they got a second chance. Give Alan Crump another chance, I'm done.
Mr. Chairman, or somebody else to speak? No, I just have, I do have a short...
I mean, this is going to be big. He's got a grand finale for us, apparently. Larry Burks. Go on once. Quentin...
Yes, sir.
Quentin, come on up there and state your name and address. Sir, if you wouldn't mind removing your hat.
Oh, yes, sir. I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Yes, sir.
Just state your name and the address, and you're going to have three minutes to open.
Yes, sir, my name is Quentin Art. Uh, I live on ninety-four thirty-seven East Montego Lane, District E, where you're from. Um, I just want to talk about my culture, and he was just discussing, you know, crime and violence. I've had six friends, six feet under, and we're trying to find out the solution and trying to find out what's the problem with our city. And what's the problem is, to me, is like, I just know, I'm not throwing, showing it shine, but I think that y'all have this type of podium, and y'all not taking advantage of it, because me, as an eighteen-year-old young man, I'm a motivational speaker for cattle park high school, I go to the man, the principal, I was just in here hundreds of high school, I speak to about two hundred kids a day, and we're trying to find out what's going on, and I'm trying to see, I'm eighteen years old, and it's so sad that the leaders are not in the community. You know, y'all have a different district, different A, different B, C, D, E, but I'm trying to find out why aren't y'all digging, give y'all hands dirty? Because the problem is that people are dying, literally dying. My friend had got shot dead in my face. Blood, and my friend had got shot dead, and I, I'm trying to prevent it, but I'm only eighteen, and my, only people that are going to hear me are my generation. We need people, the leaders right here, to step up, because, for instance, Mr. Everson, I'm not trying to throw shade or anything, but my grandmother lives in Cedar Grove, and this should be.
That's District, uh, D.
District D, District D, District D. And we're seeing so much crime, to the point, we're trying to figure out what's going on. There's so much good stuff that's going on the other side, what's going on with our side? We're not seeing nothing, we're not seeing no kind of advance, nothing, nothing, no advancement is going on in our schools, in nothing, because people can say, you know what, um, you know, the school is going okay, it's going okay, but on the other side, it's magnificent. Everything's magnificent, but everything needs to step up, our leaders need to come together, and we need to find a solution, because people out here are dying. Eighteen years old, having a life that's being taken away, it's not because of the police officers, it's our decisions. So we need to find out, instead of putting money in different things that we don't need, we need to come up with different things. How about come up with, you know, organizations that we bring kids after school, and we teach them about knowledge, teach them about different things they need to know, so they don't get killed. Let's take them off the streets, but we're putting our money in things that we don't need, and people are not seeing that. They're not seeing that at all. So we have to step up. I can't do it, because I'm not, I'm a leader in my community, but I don't have that type of podium y'all have. I don't have that. I don't speak to hundreds of people every day. I don't do that. I try, but I can't. So, I feel like if the leaders, we need to step up and stop, let's stop trying to wipe off our hands all the time. Let's get in the mud, and let's get it done, because people are here dying. People have lack of knowledge, people are, we have, like, crackheads, everybody, we need to take those people, show them that we love them, and let's try to give them jobs. Let's try to show them that it is a way of life, they have a purpose in this world. That's all I have to say. Thank y'all.
Thank you for coming down.
We appreciate you coming down, absolutely, and, and if I could say briefly, and I'm sure that other council members have felt this way too, I mean, sometimes it's great to hear from you with that kind of energy, you know, and, and sometimes I think we feel, I know certainly I sometimes feel frustrated and kind of unsure of what to do next. Um, you know, we try different things, and it's always good to hear from people who have different perspectives, so maybe we can hear things that we hadn't thought of, or ways we can connect resources that might be more beneficial than what we've tried, because, you know, sometimes you, these problems can be, they're so intertwined, and there's so many different layers of them, and sometimes you feel like you're making progress on one, and then something else is getting worse. And, uh, and so it, it can be overwhelming, and it does take everybody, and don't feel like you're, because you're eighteen, that opinion is not valid, it's very valid, and it's very helpful, and oftentimes it's a perspective that, you know, we don't have, you know, so it's helpful to hear from people who see it from different lights, and I applaud you for coming down here today and sharing it with us. Would love to talk with you a little bit more afterwards, if you have a chance.
Come back again. Sammy Mears?
Sammy Mears, nineteen oh one Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven one one oh one apartment, M one ten. Well, I'm back, and this time today, I want to say that the churches in Shreveport, Bossier, Minden, and Blanchard, and anywhere else, where, of course, that's where I grew up, I think they now need to go to church lockdown on Sunday mornings, and the reason is because of the situation with First Baptist Church in Sutherland Springs, Texas, just recently, and that situation should never have happened. Twenty-six people were killed there. My heart has really gone out to them because of what this wacko did that he shouldn't have done. And boy, was he sick. I mean, that's sick. They have to tear down the old building now and build a brand new one, and I'm sure they're going to get that done as soon as they can, or just whenever they can, and let's keep them in our prayers as well. Sunday school can have unlocked doors for people to come in, but then when it goes to morning worship, it would be a different thing if they just go to lockdown for safety so that nobody will get hurt or killed, and the situation that happened over there in Texas will not happen here in Shreveport or anywhere else. The real crazy ones out there, you think they would die? Not those kind, they live forever and bug you. And the thing is, also to say that it would really seem that way, and I'm all, I'm advising all the churches to go to lockdown on Sunday morning worship from now on, for safety purposes. Also, in conclusion, November twenty-ninth, December sixth, and December thirteenth, mark those on your calendars, because Church of the Holy Cross will be having a soup lunch, dessert, iced water, and coffee at eleven a.m. for four dollars. I know, Jeff, that you, James, and Willie have been there, Oliver, I know you've come before, I hope you'll come again, and if Jerry Bowman and Stephanie Lynch are able to feel better, I hope that they'll try to come too, and Michael, I'd like to see you there, Art, everybody else, come, they have good soup. These guys up here, and I would know, we've been there, Mayor Holly Tyler, hope you and the others will come. So Brian, y'all, you want to come and thumbs up? Good. I hope to see you there. After all, that soup is out of this world. I would know, because when I'm there, I pour it right into me. I don't mean, not like that, but I do love it.
Thank you. Is there any other council business for us today, except for the clerk?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, as the official representative from the council, I wanted to report that the Shreveport Symphony Concert sold out Saturday night, and there were a large number of young people there.
I was going to say, I have a few friends who went there first time.
And the, uh, it was the music of John Williams, and nobody went to sleep, because we had music from Jaws, Jurassic Park, Schindler's List, and E.T. And it was a great concert, and, uh, once we get the facility renovated, it's going to be even better. No.
He's a symphony guy. No other business for the council with this minute.